So we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, the public at this meeting, too. Rod and anybody that's watching online, welcome. Agenda management. See, the agenda is proposed. Any changes to that?
No approval.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Right. Move on to the public forum. And Jess.
I don't know.
Rod, you have something?
I actually have something, yes.
That's great.
I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by a person here in Waverly who just moved to town. Kurt knows about this. He may need to say a word or two, and I don't want to belabor this. But he paid a deposit, which is very normal when someone moves to town, has utilities connected. After he moved to town, he moved to another location in Waverly, and he had to pay a second deposit, which he thought was really unfair. So he came to me as his city council representative. I suggested that he talk to Kurt, which he did, and I think he got an explanation that he was happy with. So I told him that if he wasn't at this meeting today, I would just simply bring it up to the board. So you're aware of that. At some point, you know, you may want to discuss the policy on those kinds of issues, but I've done my duty, so I am now going to be quiet and go sit down and quietly observe. Thank you.
No, thank you. I mean, we have, just so you know, Rod, we have, this has come up before, not maybe exactly the situation you're referring to, but we have certainly talked about, you know, the deposit requirements that we have, which, my recollection, and we can kind of talk about it again sometime, but that they're fairly industry standard. I mean, we do what I think most utilities do, but I don't know if you want to speak to that anymore.
Yeah, but I'm, now with discussion question, I believe we got office questions answered. We have a couple of concerns on what we have for policy, telling them that we had discussed at the board level just recently, in the last few months, and seem to be okay with the explanations that we gave, so.
Thank you. All right, anything else from the public? Don't see any other public here, so we'll go ahead and, I assume we don't have anything online for comments. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Move to the consent agenda items. All items will be acted on by voice, vote, voice, vote, without separate discussion, unless there's someone from the board that wants to discuss a particular item. All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda items are approved. Move on to action items. Resolution 27-24, revisions to or review of the personnel policies and procedures. Angie.
This is the same one that I brought last month, but I did add in the step in the funeral part. And I did compare with some other utilities and with the city, and ours is much more detailed, which is what we wanted. So I feel comfortable with what we're submitting for all those.
Entertained motion, second to approve. Resolution 27-24.
We approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
So Angie, I mean, comparison with the city, we're on the same page, or any, what's any major differences?
Just ours is more detailed than the city. We detail out what an immediate family member is versus, theirs is very generic.
Okay.
And we found that helps us clarify to employees.
Great.
All right, Angie, please go.
Brunkhorst.
Hi.
Kettleson.
Yes.
Buckingham.
Yes.
Kayla.
Hi.
All right, resolution 27-24 is approved. Move on to information items. And I don't see any, anything. Other business? Now, I'm sure there must be some.
I always have one thing, so. This is a, just a conversation piece, more of a board update. I attended the third quarter MEAN meeting over Nebraska about three weeks ago. Not a lot of items came out of the August meeting. They're generally between their audit season and a budgeting season, so not a lot of financial stuff came out of the discussion. Probably the highlight of the discussion items on the finance side was capacity of payments to utilities that pay into the market for selling capacity in the market from the local generation. We'd asked for some increases on the current contract agreement that we have, but right now, we're receiving about $2, we're receiving $2 a megawatt for capacity that we sell into the market through MEAN. That agreement will expire in April of 2025, and we've been asking for some methodology refinements to how those calculations are put together. MEAN staff had come back with the refinements. Wasn't as high as we wanted, but it was at least something. What MEAN is proposing to put in place for 2025 is a 50% or 50 cent increase in '25, and a 50 cent increase in '26. So basically, a dollar overall capacity improvement for what we would receive for anything we sell into the marketplace. Up for negotiation still is, this would be a significant one, in my opinion, is right now, we do not receive any compensation when we're called up to generate in a capacity setting for our labor charges that the utility incurs. So a lot of times, that happens after hours, weekends, holidays, things like that, and we don't receive any reimbursement on that. MEAN is open to the subject matter of reimbursing utilities that do sell into the market to reimburse for the labor that we incur, so we'll see about getting that, getting that in November, be up for discussion and vote at that time, so. Waverly Utilities, we'll go into the marketing agreement discussions here probably in the next month or two to start having those conversations, and load we might be selling into the market in the next year or two. The marketing agreements always fluctuate. Right now, we're in a two-year agreement. The previous one, we were in a one-year agreement, but we've had them as high as three years, so we'll see what the folks over at MEAN want to do with us coming here in the future. Outside of that, we haven't had no other significant things. Legislative sessions are all kind of sitting on sidelines for right now, this time of year, so nothing too significant came out of the legislative side of things, so.
Yeah, I did see, looking at our electric budget, proposed budget, that we, I think, I think this was capacity, sort of revenue, basically, 963,000, something like that, which I think the thought was up from what we've had in the past, so.
It is up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah? Keep pitching.
That's all we knew.
All right, good. Thank you. Anything else on other business? Right, board calendar. I do know Kurt, Jen, that we've got September 25th.
Yes.
Coming up. We'll probably talk about it a little bit more, but make sure you, everybody's noting that on your calendar for the groundbreaking for the solar array?
No.
Four o'clock? And we'll continue with budget sessions the next few months? Anything else on the calendar? We'll go ahead and move to action items. The, the electric utility and financials. There you are.
So what we have in front of you is the electric facility in July, we're going to work on the angels. The revenues yearly based revenues were under budgeted by 273,000. As we talked before, really, weather's been so mild, that that's the culprit. Customer revenues were under by 78,000. Residential, under by 88,000. Industrial, by 347,000. The ECA has come in and offset some of those, offset some of those declines. It was actually over budgeted by 367,000. Mislaying's operating income was under by 195,000, and that's due to the low WISA, capacity and energy sales. They have the same issues with the weather as we do. Kilowatt hour sales for the month were 479,000, less than July of the same year of 2023 compared to this year, with residential over by 174,000, and industrial under by 672,000. The saving grace is that expenses were 628,000 better or under what yearly based budget was, and that's basically due to the WISA and WS4 generation being under by 258,000, diesel generation by 139, wind by 74, and general average by 65,000. Those culminate into a net income of 440,000 better than budget, basically upon keeping those expenses in control. Total cash and investments, total cash, including restricted, is at 15,276,000. This is a monthly increase of 234,000. We have outstanding bonds of 11,765,000, and that is not a change.
So we're just over the half-year mark, so projecting out, what do you see projecting out for the end of the year?
So if you were to look at the budget, I actually do put in what I anticipate for the remaining months of the year in that. So let's just go to your budget. And for the projected 2024, net income is at 958,275.
Great, so we'll almost double from where we stand here, so that's very good.
Well, we anticipate making pets and good winter, or good heating days so far, that we're anticipating it coming back a little bit. That's not to say that's your net income, whereas we have, cash flow wise, we have a couple of big capital improvements that are coming in the next couple of months, so I would anticipate the cash is going to take a little dip, but then net income should be fine.
I mean, you know, the ECA swings back and forth, and I think we're getting the benefit of that right now, so.
Great, thank you.
All right. The questions are entertained motion, second to approve the financials as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the financials are approved. Move on to reimbursement resolution. Kelly.
Yeah, so this is the standing reimbursement resolution that we have. The monthly total of capital items is 24,195, and that brings the running total to 924,703.
All right. Entertained motion, second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
No questions, we'll go ahead and Angie.
Kettleson, yes. Brunkhorst.
Aye.
Buckingham.
Yes.
Kayla.
Aye.
All right, resolution, reimbursement resolution 29-24 is approved. Now, we'll move on to the cost of service study. And Dave Berg, thanks for being here, Dave.
Always a pleasure to come down, especially when it's a nice day for trouble.
So you should be able to go on B? And did you want to hand these out, Kelly?
Would everyone like a hard copy?
It'd be helpful, because it's hard to see here.
Now, some of what's in my presentation will not necessarily be in the report that you've got, but most of the primary tables that I'm going to be talking about are in
And I assume this is going to be put on the web after today?
This is a working document.
Okay.
It'll be put out until after you guys approve it, and we're not pulling it out by print.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all, the board hasn't decided which direction you want to go with, right? Yeah, so it's just interim report right now.
Yeah, but at the city, we would, interim, we could, I mean, a draft, we could.
Yeah, we could kind of put drafts out before, because.
Yeah, and Rod, and anybody from the public, just, you know, clarify, cost of service study is sort of a code word for a rate study. And we do this by annual, every other year, and so this is a time to do that and look at not just the level of our rates, but also, you know, we have several different rates depending on residential and industrial and so on, and that's, Dave will go through all this, so.
All right, great. Like I said, glad to be here. So this is what we call the interim report. So basically, it is the analysis that I've done to date relative to talking about kind of where we're going to be headed relative to rates. So after today, I'll be designing recommended rates for implementation, and we'll be backed down to make that presentation at the end. And this is typically how we have done this. And so what I'm going to be reporting on, would you go ahead and give me the next one? So one of the things is looking at a projection of the operating results for the utility under the assumption that the existing rates don't change. So I do a five-year projection. Now, '24 is actually going to be a projected year within my analysis, but right now, my '24 is based on the same numbers that Kelly had mentioned earlier today, that, where she has sort of updated her view of where '24 is going to be. But then I go out through '28. Now, and this includes, there was a 3% increase in rates this year that you implemented, and so obviously, the, the '24 results have all been at the, at that rate, which went into effect at the beginning of the year. Then we're going to be talking just about, you know, where you're at relative to debt service, relative to capital improvements, because those are, those are important. And then we're going to look at what the operating results look like, and then really, what happens to your reserve levels. Because what happens to your reserve cash is really probably the best indication, you know, of where you're headed from a financial perspective. And you've got sort of an interesting intertwining of different debt, or of different, excuse me, cash reserve funds, and have some, some sort of requirements relative to the levels that those are at. And so that will kind of tell a tale about where, if there are no rate changes, where you're at going forward. And then we're going to talk about the, the cost of service study. Basically, cost of service study is primarily about fairness, really. It's looking at different groups of customers, so instances like residential customers, commercial customers. And so we look at these groups of customers, and within the cost of service study, what I do is what's called an allocation of costs, where I take the costs or the expenses of the utility, and through what Glenn Cannon used to call Voodoo, but anyway, through a process, those costs are allocated to the different classes, and then we can compare that to the amount of revenue that we get from them, those classes, in order to make a judgment as to whether there's any subsidies going on. You know, is residential subsidizing industrial, that kind of thing. And then I'm just going to talk about basically some, some rate design issues, and really kind of looking for some rate design guidance from you all before we move forward then into developing new rates as a recommendation.
You probably need that back in. You may have to reload it.
Okay. So I think the most important thing, and Kelly mentioned the total outstanding debt, but I think what's most important about the, the debt going forward right now is that you don't have any plans for any new debt. So right now, this, when you look here at the annual debt service, which is basically the, the interest expense and the principal expense on the debt, these, these are debt that are in place right now, that you're actually, you know, we're working over time, obviously, to pay them down, just like somebody would with their mortgage. And so there is no new debt right now in the plan over the course of the next five years through 2028. Okay? And when we look at the capital improvements, and especially the next couple of years, you've got, you know, fairly significant capital improvements relative to sort of where things are at, about 2.7 million this year and 3 million in '25, and then it starts to wane down a little. Although oftentimes, what happens is, is that in the outer years, the numbers are a little bit smaller because you haven't planned something yet, and something else, you know, sort of comes about. But it's not a, it's not an unusual, you know, level, and there's no, there's no huge numbers in there, like where, you know, you've got some big thing that's $10 million or something like that. So it, it's a little higher in the early years, but not an unreasonably high level of capital expenses going forward.
Okay, you know, on that, just, I asked this of Kelly and Kurt, and I'll go ahead and ask you two. I don't know if you looked at our kind of overall picture, if you believe our capital improvement budget is sufficient, or is it too much, or do you have any, any judgment on that?
Well, the hard thing about making a judgment on whether or not capital improvements is sufficient or not takes a, a better knowledge of kind of the technical capabilities of your system than, than I have. One of the things that oftentimes utilities will look at is that, kind of theoretically is that the depreciation expense that you have is an operating expense, which depreciation is a non-cash expense. You don't write a check to somebody for depreciation, but it's there as an operating expense. And so what happens is, is that, and I've got a table coming up where I'll be able to show this, but is, if you sort of compare your depreciation expense to your capital improvements on an ongoing basis, if those are sort of reasonably close to each other, what you're really doing is, by funding depreciation, you're making cash available to reinvest into your system in a manner that is sort of replacing the part of your system that's kind of depreciating.
Yeah.
So in a way, it's kind of keeping up.
The only reason I ask, and I can bring this up, just because, you know, I don't know that much about, you know, the technical aspects, certainly of our equipment or so on, but I just know that our depreciation ratio, which is the amount of depreciate, amount of depreciation that we have taken for existing, you know, assets and so on, that ratio is fairly, fairly high, so it means that we have depreciated, you know, our assets a fair amount compared to the total. And that, not saying that's, that's a big concern, but that is one indication of, hey, maybe you better be paying attention, and maybe you better be investing more in your capital equipment and so on.
One of the things that's interesting is that oftentimes in, in utility world is that there are certain items which create a step function relative to capital improvements and relative to adding to your system. And in particular, they're either in a generation perspective or like a substation. These are things that you don't do very often, and when you do them, obviously, that greatly increases the amount of system that you have, which then, of course, increases your depreciation expense every year going forward for, you know, like the 30-year life of those, those assets. But what happens is, you have that step function, so then the depreciation steps up. But then you go a while before you end up having, you know, kind of another step function. And, and so what happens is that the depreciation is gradual every year. Let's say it's all on a 30-year, so it's sort of 1/30th of what you've got is depreciating away every year. And sometimes you replace a little of that as you go, but then at some point, you have another step function because you had something big. So it doesn't always match kind of exactly, but like I said, in, in a couple of tables, I'll have something where we can have a little bit more discussion on that. So this is the projected operating results. Now, again, this is under the assumption that existing rates stay in effect through 2028. And the reason that we do this analysis is because it really helps us to understand what our revenue need may be going forward. It's all about kind of addressing, okay, if we need to do rate increases, sort of how much are they? And so when you look at that, that bottom line, that, that change in net position for this year, and again, this is, this is based on the new numbers that I got from Kelly just, actually, yesterday. And you'll see that for 2024, that, that change in net position is not even 2% of revenues. It looks a little bit better in 2025 based on budget, but then again, it continues to, you know, sort of diminish then. Now, it makes sense, because what's happening is, now, we don't have any growth in sales in our projections going forward. So essentially, what you've got, obviously, is you've got an assumption of no growth in sales. Now, your biggest expense is, is around power, wholesale power, power, you know, assets that you own, fuel, et cetera, and transmission. Now, those items, you kind of get covered relative to how your adjustment clause works. And so as those expenses may go up or down, your rates automatically change. Because you'll notice that the operating revenues are going up going forward, even though we don't have increases in sales, and that's because we've got increases assumed around power costs. And so that flows through the rates automatically and covers that. But what doesn't get covered in the adjustment clause is essentially all of the local expenses, all of the things that are happening within the community to, to maintain and operate your system. And so with no increases in sales and with no change in rates, but with increasing local expenses, it makes sense that the bottom line starts to diminish going forward. Just about everybody's projection like this looks like this, it's just varying degrees of, of what's happening to that bottom line. And so when I, when you look at this, and actually, the next slide is when we look at, I mean, go ahead, is what happens to reserve funds. Now, are we stuck again?
Okay, there goes.
There we go. No? There. Okay, so when we look. Okay, so when we look at what happens to reserve funds, now, when you started at the beginning of this year, there was about $15 million total in your reserve funds. And so what we do is we add in that change in net position, that bottom line from the previous slide. We also add in depreciation because I commented that, you know, depreciation is a non-cash expense. Now, here's where we can look at, because we add in that depreciation number on the third line. And then that bottom line right before the, kind of the answer is the capital improvements. So you'll notice that the depreciation is about, we'll call it 2.5 to 3 million dollars per year, kind of in that range. You'll notice that the depreciation is going up. That's because we're adding more assets through capital improvements than what has been depreciated. And so you'll notice the capital improvements that, so the depreciation in '24 was 2.4 million, capital is 2.7. Next year, we're looking at 2.6 with capital of 3 million. The following year, we're at 2.7 with capital of 2.1. So if we just look at those three years, you can see there's a pretty close match if you look at the totals of the depreciation versus the capital improvements. So what you could kind of say is that as stuff is depreciating away, we're kind of replacing it. Is essentially what's happening. And in particular, because your capital items are not being driven by growth. It's not like you're putting in a bunch of big new subdivisions and, or have to build a new substation because you've got a whole bunch of growth. So it's a, it's a fairly good indication of a, of a solid level of capital improvements relative to kind of replacing and fixing your system over time as it's depreciating. You know, and theoretically, you'd be obviously replacing the oldest stuff, the stuff that needs, needs replacing. Just to sort of complete this table, we get a little bit of cash coming in from an interfund loan that the electric utility made. And then the principal payments, the interest payments were in the previous operating results table, but the principal payments on that debt, and we had the debt table earlier in the presentation, those come out as well. And bottom line is that what you're seeing happen is total cash reserves go from 15 million at the beginning of this year to a projection of about 12 million at the end of the period. So essentially, it's a, it's a 3 million degradation relative to reserve funds. And so that's an indication, because what you don't want to do is have your reserve funds disappearing on you. Because your, your reserve funds now are based on your policies or basically kind of where you want them to be. So there is an indication here of the need for some additional increases going forward. And let me tell you, in, in my business, that's not unusual at this point. I'm not doing any rate decreases, I can tell you that.
Relatively flat projected electric sales is pretty, pretty reasonable too, given the fact that I think we've been flat pretty much for the last 10, 15 years.
Yeah, the vast majority of my clients, their optimistic projections are for flat sales. Essentially, what we've been seeing in our industry is that whatever increases you may be having have been basically eaten up by energy efficiency. When you look at what has happened, you know, lighting has been so significant as, as, you know, if you think about your home, as we went from incandescents to CFLs to now LEDs, you know, most light fixtures now are probably using, you know, less than 1/6th of what they used to use in energy. And you look at the more efficient appliances, I mean, I saw it significantly, a couple of years ago, I put in a new air conditioner, and I noticed a dramatic decrease in my summer energy usage because of a, of a more efficient air conditioner. And so as people are, you know, buying new air conditioners or new freezers and fridges and things like that, you know, they're just so much more efficient than what they used to be. And so really, our, our efforts in energy efficiency in the industry have been so successful that essentially that's, you know, been kind of eating up the growth. And, you know, everybody is for using less energy, but there's also then an impact ultimately on collection of your fixed costs over a, you know, a non-increasing number of sales. Next one, which is a little bit more about reserves. Now, this shows kind of the same sort of thing. So the top line is the end of your reserves. So that was the bottom line in the previous slide. Now, you have got some designated funds. You've got a rate stabilization fund. What I'm calling other designated funds, there's, there's several of them that, and they're actually in the report. But that, you know, and those are add up to about 5.2 million, and those I've kept flat. You've also got some restricted funds, and then you've got an unrestricted amount of cash. And that's sort of the cash that's available for you to kind of use for whatever you need it for. Now, what's happening here, in order to meet your unrestricted cash requirement, which is set at 15% of the utility cash requirements. So I show the utility cash requirements there, which is not your total expenses because some of your expenses, like depreciation, don't require cash. So in order to keep your unrestricted cash where it needs to be, the place that ultimately is taking the hit is your rate stabilization fund. And you notice it goes from about 4 million down to about 2 million. And so that's where we're seeing the cash ultimately kind of going away within the stack of various funds that you have. And you actually don't want to be utilizing your rate stabilization fund because that's there. You have used it in the past when you've had some, you know, issues in a given year where, you know, revenue is down or expenses are up, and you use that to sort of soften that blow, but then kind of try to rebuild it over time again so that it's, it's sort of your emergency fund to keep from having hit people with a big increase. And so thus the name rate stabilization fund. So again, that, that's just an indication of where those funds are starting to wean away on you. Go ahead. Now, I mentioned cost of service. So when we look at the test year, which was actually 2023, so the, the cost was about 15.3 million dollars is the, the amount of revenues that we get from the actual rate payers. You also have some other revenues that you get that are, are part of covering your expenses as well. And so this is on a dollar basis, and you look at the numbers, like for residential, the allocated cost to serve was basically 6 million, and the revenues were 6.1 million. And, and when we look at cost of service, those numbers are relatively close. And an easier way to look at this, let's go to the next slide. This one shows it on a percentage basis. And so what it's saying is that 39.4% of the cost of the utility is the residential class, but we get 40% of the revenues. That's within 1.5% of each other. Now, cost of service is not an exact science. I could go in and make changes to the analysis that would be perfectly acceptable because there's a lot of acceptable ways to look at cost of service. And those numbers over on the right would change a little. The amount of revenues wouldn't change, but the allocated costs could change. My rule of thumb is that in that far right column, anything within 5% is a pretty reasonable answer relative to are your, are your rates, what we would call cost-based on a total by different class of customers. And actually, yesterday I told Kurt that of all of my clients, this is the best cost of service results I've really got right now. And so from that perspective, you don't have any subsidies of concern between various classes of customers. Okay? Now, when talking about what I was talking about with the rate guidance, this is, this is your rates, and there's actually several slides in order to show them all. And I just wanted to comment on a few as we go. So residential, you've got a customer charge, and then in the winter time, you've got a single energy rate. But then in the summertime, you've got what is called an inverted or inclining rate, where if you use more than 600 kilowatt hours, which is in the neighborhood of sort of an average annual use for a residential customer, the rate goes up. And the idea here is, you know, residential customers, in the summertime, they significantly add to the load of the utility through the use of air conditioning. And of course, that all disappears in the non-summer. And so to serve that is more expensive because it's energy that you have to serve just during about four months of the year, but then you don't get any sales for the infrastructure that's put in place to serve that. And so you charge a little more for that excess energy in the summertime. And that's, lots of utilities have got what are called inverted rates. Now, I've got a point later, but I know that there's discussions about the, the level of customer charge for the residential class, which is currently at 2297. Now, one of the other things within the cost of service study, not only looking at the total cost to serve like the residential class, it also allows me to take a look at the different components, in particular for them, the, the customer charge versus the energy charge. And on a cost basis for the customer portion of the rate, that 2297 is very, very close to the, to the cost of service charge for customer-related expenses. So what are customer-related expenses? Well, some of them are physical equipment expenses, and some of them are customer service-oriented expenses. So if you look at your home, a transformer has to be placed to, to, to serve your home. And you probably, well, you would, in your neighborhood, you would share the transformer with several other homes. But that's a fixed cost that is there and it's on a customer-related basis. If you've got, let's say, five customers connected to a transformer, each one of those five, there's a fixed cost, their share of the, of the cost of putting that transformer in. And no matter how much energy you use, more or less, the cost of that transformer is fixed. If you use zero energy, there's still a transformer there that has been placed under the assumption of serving you. There's a service line that comes from that transformer to the home. There's a meter installation on your home. These are all physical aspects that had to be purchased, had to be installed, and have to be maintained. Those are all fixed customer-related expenses. There's also, you need to have customer service people at the utility. Answer the phone, respond to emails, answer questions, those types of things. You've got billing, you've got reading meters, you've got generating the bills, you've got processing payments. All of those, whether a customer uses 100 kilowatt hours or 1,000 kilowatt hours, the cost to do those customer-related are on a per customer basis. So those are what we call fixed customer expenses. And so the idea is to collect that in the customer charge. And that way, they're, they're paying their share there with the idea then that everybody also then pays their share for energy use based on the energy charges. So with that little dissertation, any questions on that topic?
So you're saying our 2297 is pretty close to that fixed cost?
Yes.
I thought we were under.
It's, it's, it's relatively close, it just is.
So, yeah. So this is where my questions probably come in. Because I didn't understand the customer charge, which is the only fixed charge that we apply to a customer, kind of the same way you explained it. You know, just it's a definitional thing. But I look at our utility and I say, we've got a lot of fixed costs that aren't, that didn't, that don't come under what you just described as the fixed costs related to the customer. But they're still there, and they'll always be there no matter how much energy we sell. And so it, you know, again, it sort of depends on how you define the customer charge or customer-related charges. But in my mind, one of the concerns I have is that our charges to our customers don't align real well with our expenses and how we incur them. So in other words, we've got a lot of fixed expense.
Yes.
That's not covered by a fixed charge to the customer.
Well, that's why, okay, there's a couple of things in that. One of the things is that is, when you look at bigger customers, you also have a demand charge, right? Which, and so there's a demand and an energy.
On the industrial side.
Yeah, on the industrial side. Now, when you say that you're right, because you get fixed expenses for substations, for distribution lines.
Well, even in our, even, you know, just in our energy costs themselves, I don't, we've got
Yes.
A big chunk of fixed costs.
Yes, you do. Relative to power plant investments, for crying out loud, your staff for all intents purposes is a fixed expense.
Right.
Okay. Well, and quite frankly, the industry's always been that way. And there, there comes a, a big part of the wrinkle around rate design. Now, one of the things about residential customers, and let's, let's ignore, like people with rooftop solar, because they're, that's a different animal relative to cost to serve. So setting them aside right now. The interesting thing about residential customers, and it doesn't matter if you're a large energy user or a small energy user, the ratio of energy to demand that you put on the system, they're all pretty close. The vast majority of residential customers, when you look at a ratio of how much energy they use in kilowatt hours to the demand that they place on the system in kilowatts, all right? And, and fixed system, whether it's power plants or transmission lines or distribution systems, those are built to serve demand, okay, not energy. But we don't bill residential customers on a demand basis. But because within the residential class, that whether you're a 300 kilowatt hour or a 3,000 kilowatt hour, the ratio of energy to demand is about the same, we can charge an energy-only rate that is, that is pretty darn fair for those groups. What happens with bigger customers, and the reason that we transitioned to a demanded energy rate is they can have vastly different ratios. They can set a high demand without using very much energy, or they can set a high demand and use a lot of energy. And so we separate the billing to collect then some of those fixed costs you're referring to through the demand charge, and then less through the energy. If you just look, okay, for example, let's just talk about the, a 12-cent energy charge for residential. Okay, go to the, the next one. Now, if you look at the bottom here, general service, you'll notice their energy rates are either 7 cents or 4.8 cents, which is a lot less than 12. But they pay a demand charge of $13 in the winter and about $15 in the summer. Now, depending on how much energy they use per unit of demand, their average cost could be more than residential, or it could be less than residential. Depending upon if they use a lot of energy for every unit of demand, their average goes down, as well as it should, because they're spreading those fixed costs over a lot of energy. But if they use very little energy and still set the demand, their average cost could be 25 cents a kilowatt hour. And so you can't design, they can have a wide spectrum of that ratio when you look at bigger customers, which is the real reason why we have demanded energy rates, so that their sort of average rate self-adjusts depending upon how efficiently they use the system.
That's a very helpful explanation. That, that helps me quite a bit. Although I still have one issue that it, you know, you may have seen in what I wrote. It still leaves the utility exposed to fluctuations in energy usage because we're sitting on this fixed cost, and if it's a very cool summer or whatever it is, nobody's using electricity very much, we certainly can see a swing in our bottom line because people are not, we're not charging for the fixed costs that we have.
What's interesting is, is that exists in electric. It's even worse in water and gas. And I have a lot of gas customers that last winter were not very happy because they didn't sell hardly any gas because we had such a warm winter. The winter before that, they were all very, very pleased because we had a very cold winter and they sold a lot of gas. Think about water. There was some chit-chat about water before the meeting started, and you think about, a water system is even more fixed cost than an electric system is. Their pumping costs and maybe chemicals is the only per gallon variable cost in water. And so if you have a really wet summer and people don't irrigate, it can be, you know, financially really problematic for water utilities. But then if you have a dry summer and people water a lot, it can be, it can be a really, you know, sort of great thing from a financial perspective. And so that's just one of the wrinkles of all utilities.
Yeah, I mean, although we have a mechanism to mitigate that to a certain degree, that through a customer charge, through a customer charge that we're not, through a fixed charge, whether you call it customer or whatever, that we're not doing. And I understand your explanation on demand, that makes a lot of sense. I can see the fairness in that. I'm just, I'm just talking about from a utilities' perspective, why, why would we expose ourselves to so much fluctuation in...
The other problem is, how do you design a fixed charge that then takes into account these expenses that are more demand-related? Let me give you an example. You've got the single widow in a home who uses 300 kilowatt-hours, and next door to her, there's a family of nine who uses 4,500 kilowatt-hours. So when you look at the demand piece of costs, that big family home uses a lot more than that, that single woman does. So if I increase my customer charge from 22 to $50, what happens is, there's a huge subsidy flowing from the 300 kilowatt-hour customer to the 4,500 kilowatt-hour customer, because it's, it's difficult, you can calculate fixed costs per customer, but you can't make it fair.
Well, yeah, I mean, I completely understand what you're saying. You use the word subsidy, and subsidy is in the eye of the beholder to me. I, you know, I can make the other argument the other way. The demand thing does make sense to me. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that you leave the utility exposed to a fair amount of fluctuation. And the other thing I know you mentioned you're going to bring up here pretty quick is solar customers. It's certainly showing up as we have more solar customers, they come in and say, wait a minute, you know, you're charging me 12 cents per kilowatt-hour, and you're paying me 5 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt-hour when I sell it back. And that difference is created by, again, the fact that we have a lot of fixed expense that we're running through our rate.
Well, and here's, you know, from a cost basis, like, for instance, a solar customer. So let's, let's say we have a solar customer who is a, what they would call a net-zero customer. Over the course of the year, they, they generate from their solar the exact amount of power that they need for their home. So you would say, well, then my bill should be zero, right? However, when they do that, obviously, solar is only generated during the day, and a lot more is generated in the summertime than in the wintertime. So what you have to have is, is solar that will over-generate your needs when the sun is shining. So in the summertime and during the daytime in particular, you're going to over-generate. Well, what are you going to do with that energy? Well, you send it out onto the system, right? Because you can't use it all in your home. You know, in this hour, I, I used 10 kilowatt-hours and I generated 40. So I sent 40 out onto the system. So, you know, theoretically, it's being stored, if you will, on the system, because at night, when it's dark, then I'm kind of using that. Well, that system, you're getting value from that as a solar customer. If you weren't getting any value from the system, then disconnect from it. Well, that will work, because then when you over-generate, unless you install a whole bunch of batteries, what are you going to do with the over-generation so that you can utilize it at night? So the system has value for that customer, and if their bill with no customer charge and with no energy charge on a net basis is zero, they're getting value while not paying anything, which means somebody else is subsidizing their use, because that system still has to be paid for. Now, there are, there are lots of wrinkles in rate design, and fairness is in the eye of the beholder, but, you know, for the last 100-plus years as utilities, we've been doing the best that we can, and we, and we go along, and we, and we change with the times. There's no such thing as a perfect rate.
Yeah.
But what we want to do is have good rates.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing that we should be an outlier with our customer charge or anything like that. I just, it strikes me that I think utilities will move towards higher customer charges, and, you know, not necessarily doubling them or tripling them, but move, move them higher just to try to, you know, even out the way their expenses are incurred versus how they're-
Well, and it's just happening naturally. I mean, I've been at this for 40 years now, and when I first started, there was no double-digit customer charges. And now lots of utilities over 20, I know of a utility who has a $60 customer charge, and before you go, say, that sounds good. It's an interesting, it's a Northern Minnesota electric co-op, where a big chunk of their customers are seasonal lake homes that don't use any energy in the winter. So the only way they can get revenue from them to pay for all of this fixed cost, because, you know, they might have eight months of the year with zero energy, is to have a high fixed charge.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And plus, they have like two customers per mile of line. So it's a, it's a completely sort of different kind of cost basis and customer basis. But I also know of at least one municipal utility who still has no residential customer charge. I challenged them to raise it to four, and I was denied, so.
Yeah.
But it's a great discussion, but it's a good discussion.
Yeah.
And it's important for people to kind of understand that your rate design isn't just willy-nilly, all right? There's a, you know, we're, we're trying to do a good job with it. And I appreciate the fact that you're hiring me to help you do a good job, so. Um, let's go back one more, just to talk about the rates quickly. So you also have a rural residential, this is people outside the city limits. Their energy charges are the same as the others, but they have a slightly higher customer charge because they have a lower density. And so, you know, the theory there is that their, their sort of share of the fixed is a little bit higher. So they have a slightly higher customer charge. You also have a residential electric heat charge, where in the summertime, the energy charges are the same as the regular residential. In the wintertime, they actually get a break for more usage. Now, serving wintertime load is cheaper than serving summertime load. I will say though, that that 5.93 cents, now, we've kind of gotten to the point where that's a little bit lower than it probably should be. And so as we look at doing a rate increase coming out of this, that one will probably go up on a percentage basis a little bit more than some of the others. You know, the funny thing about algebra is, if you've got a low number and a high number, and if every time they get the same percentage increase, the distance between them gets bigger. And, and so that will probably raise a little higher on a percentage basis than some of the other rates. Okay, next. You've also got several different commercial and municipal rates. Those first two, the first one is your regular commercial. Now, you'll notice that they've got seasonal energy rates, winter and summer, and when they get above 2,000 kilowatt-hours in both seasons, the rate is cheaper. We have been on a multi-year plan to get rid of that declining block rate. It does not make sense on a cost basis. And so we're just going to continue that, where our goal is to get to just a single seasonal rate in that class. And we've been doing this through multiple rate studies in order to avoid rate shock. But we will continue that where we'll be raising those higher volume rates to bring them up to the lower rate. You also have a time-of-use rate, so there's on-peak and off-peak, so, you know, during the day or at nights and weekends on a seasonal basis. Then we've got that general service, talked about that rate relative to the demand and energy, so we already commented on that. You'll also notice that as we get to bigger customers, the customer charges keep increasing. You know, we were at $22 for residential, we're at $38 for commercial, up to $186 for general service. So their share of those sort of fixed customer costs, as they get bigger, is higher. Next. And then we've got a demand time-of-use rate, so it's a sort of a combination of the, of a couple of the previous ones. You've got a municipal service rate which mirrors the commercial rate, and that'll be changing the same way. Also, the municipal demand which mirrors the general service demand. You just have a separate municipal rate, but they're the same rate. And then next. Now, the top one here, you've got an interruptible general service rate. You've always had one customer on that rate. They never get interrupted. My understanding is, is that they are essentially no longer a customer, they've got, the building is still there, but there's nothing happening, and so they're using very little energy. You also haven't been asked to interrupt for a long time from your power supply situation. And so we're going to be suggesting elimination of this interruptible rate. Like I said, there's one customer on it, and that customer isn't functioning anymore. They've just got a building with not, anything going on. So we're going to be recommending elimination of the interruptible rate. And then you've got a number of lighting rates. The only one I'm going to focus, down to the streetlights, and of course, streetlights are kind of funny, because they're billed to the city, but they don't pay it. And so the number is, to a certain extent, irrelevant. But that last one, that 1,000-watt LED rate was recently added, had a number that is far too low. And so it just looks funny, because it ended up being set at the same rate as the 400-watt sodium or LED equivalent, but it really should be probably more in the neighborhood of about $100 a month. And just to make it make sense, we're going to, it, it doesn't affect the bottom line whatsoever, but we're just going to fix that rate to make it look like it makes sense. That's mainly me. Okay, so Kelly and her budget has a 3% increase for next year, and I'm, I'm happy with that as an increase relative to my recommendations as well. So right now, barring any different opinions from you, that's my plan, is to come with that. I'm also, you've typically been having me do this every other year, so I'm looking to probably give you a two-year rate plan for the next two years, and probably will be increases of about the same each of those, but just to try to address this, this decline that we're seeing overall in revenues. We talked about the customer charge aspect on the residential in particular. We talked about the, the heating rate, and relative to needing to increase that wintertime second block a little bit. Now, I have an item called new demand customer solar. So you've got some larger customers who are starting to put in solar. The interesting thing about them as compared to like a residential customer is, because they're on a demand and energy rate. All right, remember that energy rate for those customers is about half of what it is for residential, but they have that demand rate. Well, here's the funny thing, because solar is only there when it's there, most of these customers still then ultimately pay a demand charge. And oftentimes, their demand won't be any different than it was before they put the solar on, so you're still getting fixed contributions from them. So relative to the cost to serve them, and the fact that they've got solar, is from a sort of fairness and cash flow perspective, is much less problematic than it is for small commercial and residential customers.
Just can you come, so how much effect will that have on them? How much effect will it have on them by changing this?
Uh, it really won't, because go back to the rate, can you go backwards a couple? And another one. So when you look like at the municipal demand rate, which is the same as the general service demand, see that demand charge, they'll still set virtually the same demand every month on your system. So they're still going to be paying that demand charge, and their, sort of their savings, if you will, from generating solar will predominantly only be in the energy rates. Now, and for you, you actually save, when energy isn't purchased, you actually save in fuel and purchase power costs as well. And your savings is closer to the reduction in revenue than it is in residential, because you're collecting those fixed costs that you're concerned about through the demand charge, and not in the energy charge like we are in small, commercial, and residential.
So the ones that are going in right now, they should, should not see a shock if we do something different?
No. I mean, those rates are going to go up, although their demand rates will go up, their energy rates will go up, but the, sort of the economics to them are going to be any different than they are today.
Okay, thank you. And the economics to us really will be fairly well-protected as well, so.
You know, I've got, I've got a lot of clients where they've got, you know, in particular, some of the large, like, chain stores, or some of the large, like particularly the high-tech IT-type, are putting in solar on a corporate basis, because not for the financial gain necessarily, but to be good citizens. And like, you know, a lot of Costcos are putting solar on the roofs of the Costcos. They never, they never export a single kilowatt-hour to the system. And so literally, the impact on their bill is, is about the same as when they put in more efficient lighting, and they saved energy. Or if they put in better insulation, and they save energy. Or if they put in more efficient coolers for the food, and they save energy. And so that rooftop solar really starts to look kind of the same as energy efficiency, because they're not exporting, they're just reducing their, their overall, but they still set their demands, because they'll set a demand at 7:00 PM in the evening, and even in the summertime, solar output at 7:00 PM is almost zero, even though the sun is still shining, but the angle is just too low. We talked about the, the interruptible rate, and then we're just going to talk a little bit about EV charging. Now, most of the utilities who have implemented EV charging rates are doing it on a time-of-use basis, but that requires AMI. So when you don't have AMI yet, and then a lot of utilities don't have AMI yet, that's a little tougher to do. And so, you know, a lot of folks are just saying, well, the funny thing too about EV charging is there's different scenarios. Well, think about people who've got an electric vehicle in charge in their home. Well, that's one aspect, and, and a lot of utilities are doing time-of-use, but again, you need AMI. The utility that I'm on, if you have an EV charger in your home, one of the rate plans, if you charge your EV and they sub-meter the EV on a time-of-use basis, it's 40 cents a kilowatt-hour to charge during the day, and it's like 6 cents a kilowatt-hour to charge at night. So they're putting a strong economic message out there that we, they want you to charge during the night and not during the day. That's one scenario. Another scenario is businesses that put in a charger, like auto dealers or hotels, but oftentimes, they're just wired into their system. Now, they're generally on a demand rate, and so what happens to them is, they don't have much energy go flow through that charger, because it's just not used very much, but if somebody plugs in during their peak time, it'll add fairly significantly to their demand. And so they end up paying kind of a lot for that little bit of energy. They just don't notice it, because it gets lost in the overall bill of their, of their large, you know, facility. There's also standalone chargers, and I know Kurt said you guys have one, that the utility owns. And so, you know, people do that in various ways. Some have flat charges, some have a connect fee, some have time-of-use charges, and so on. But to really start getting creative with EV rates really requires, you know, an AMI system, and, and until you're there, you know, you just sort of go along and, and, you know, a lot of people are saying that the penetration of EVs is going to be significant, but right now, the experience has been that it hasn't been that significant. And just talked to car dealers, they're bemoaning the fact that they've got all these EVs sitting on their lots, not being sold. So where that goes, I guess we'll see. I think that's it. Last one, questions? There we go.
Have you seen a fixed charge for customers with EVs?
Sometimes there will be a small one, because like, all right, we're going, we have to put a sub-meter on, so maybe you've got like the $22 customer charge, and then maybe we have an additional like $3 charge or something relative to the sub-metering for, for your EV. Some do not have that, but that's, that's one way some have gone.
So it looks like your recommendations are going to be some tweaks on a couple rates, but nothing major, is that...
Right, yeah. And, and some of this is, you know, we've been on, you know, you've been on a path that, of course, since you're hiring me, I think it's been a great path, but, you know, we've been looking at your rates every two years, and, and we've made some decisions, and, and we've tried to do some gradual changes. You know, we've been, we've been increasing some of those customer charges, we've been addressing this declining block rate and the commercial rate. You know, now we're, it's like, we've gotten to the point where that heating rate is a little out of whack, and by, by looking at this every couple of years and identifying and addressing these things before they become significantly problematic, that's just a much better approach. You know, I've worked for utilities like, we've never done a rate. I'm working for somebody right now who's never done a rate study, and they've got some significant problems with their rate design, because these rates were set umpteen years ago, and they've been doing across-the-board adjustments ever since. They've been generating enough money, but what happens, that algebra example I gave you, is that when you keep doing cross-the-board adjustments, if things were a little unfair 40 years ago, they're really unfair now, because of, you know, the people are paying too, more than they should have, their increases- too, more than they should have, their increases are more.
So you're planning on doing a two-year recommendation, but what happens if we did a three-year, or is it things too far, or the future's going to be changing too much to go out three or four years?
You could go out further, just understand that you might have to adjust. I mean, I've had utilities ask for a five-year, and I'm like, well, we'll give you a five-year, and then all of a sudden, I check with them after two years, and they're already off the plan because things were different than what they anticipated.
Yeah, I mean, it's like trying to guess what inflation's going to be in a couple years.
Well, that, you know, and, you know, those high inflation periods, you know, really added on to a lot of the work that I've been doing and the more significant rate increases because a lot of utilities have had to have significant salary increases for employees. They've seen significant increases for materials that they're buying, you know, in order to make the capital improvements that they've got. And so, you know, there's been, there's been aspects of our industry that, what's interesting is power supply has stayed relatively reasonable on the increases, but where we've been seeing it is things are more on a local basis because of benefits and pay and materials. And then the significant increases that we saw during, you know, those ugly inflationary years here a couple of years ago.
So the base fee, you're just going to do a small increase, or, or what do you think the base?
Well, relative to where we're at in the residential rate, is that, for instance, a 3%, if we just raise all the components by 3%, because our balance is good, well, then we'll keep that balance. Whereas like in that commercial rate, more of that overall increase will be in that last block to bring that up higher, which means there'll be less in other components, because we'll be shooting for, on a class-by-class basis, because the cost of service results were, were good, we'll be looking at a 3% increase that we would want to raise everybody as a group in 3%. But within some of those, there'll be some variations. Heating customers who use a lot of energy in the winter might see a little bit more because we're going to raise that, the, the over 600 in the winter from the heating rate more than 3% with then, you know, little other changes elsewhere. So that, there's some little tweaks where, you know, but, but like the regular residential will probably just 3% across the board because the, the cost of service is good, the level of the customer charge is, is good, and so we'll just increase it the same.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you.
All right, very good. So we'll move to the, Kelly, you want to speak to the budget since we've been talking numbers here?
So the 2025 budget, I think it's best if we just start on the assumptions, which are on page three. So let's just walk through that. For us to get to the operating revenues for 2025 budget of the $20,621,000, the assumption is, Dave said, we've got a 3% increase for all services. We did for the kilowatt hour sales for 2025. We have budgeted flat with the 2023 sales. We usually use the 2024 and kind of extrapolate, but we, we went back to 2023 because 2024 was unusually impacted by the warm weather. The local diesel capacity revenues are at the $962,500. We covered that earlier. Loisa and WS4 revenues are at the $2,948. Those go into that operating revenues of the $20,621. As for the operating expenses, those are set at $19,518,000. We have assumed an increase in all wages, salaried and non-union, salaried, union, non-union of 3%. We have a general increase in expenses of 3%. We have health insurance increasing, let me just make sure insurance is corrected, increasing 10%, and all other insurance increasing 20%. We have purchase power rates, which are budgeted at the 3%. Part of that that we pay to mean is a fixed cost recovery charge. We increased that by 7%. I don't recall if we mentioned it before, but they are not allocating a certain portion that has been allocated in the past. So we did a calculation as to the amount that that would impact us, and it comes to a 7% increase rather than the 3 that we've been using everywhere else. Transmission charges are being budgeted at 5%, and that's based upon what we've seen 2025. The net income comes in to $1,141,000. The one other thing that I would like to talk about is on page two. As we've talked in this meeting, capital projects really impact us. We have transformers, substation upgrade, a distribution line meters and services. We're going to replace the LED streetlights, and that's going to come to $1,532,970. We get a projection for Loisa and WS4, for the coal plants that we own, that they will have capital projects of just over $94,000. We're also going to do the transmission rebuild of $950,000, and vehicle and equipment replacements of $456,000. If you want the individual items that constitute that $456,000, it's the next bullet point below. And that's the gist of how this budget was pulled together. Any questions?
Other insurances going up 20%, can you just tell me what some of those are?
Sure. Basically, the property, I know, we had the discussion earlier in my office, because I just got my new property, an insurance estimate for the next year, and it went up 118%. Thank you. So that was a discussion with Kurt and myself as to what we anticipated. We're actually going to have another talk tomorrow with our insurance agent, which may give a little more clarity to it. But, you know, 20% might even actually be not enough.
We've asked a three-year projection from our insurance carrier for, this is working as comp property, liability, everything that covers the utility. 20% we felt was fair, but it could potentially be on the light side. They're, they're seeing increases of anywhere 35% to 55% across the board for schools, municipalities, hospitals, for property coverage.
Yeah.
So knock on wood. The utility's been very fortunate on low working comp claims, things like that, is keeping our premiums fairly well in check. Our insurance carrier feels, I think, was it 17%? I think this year's what it went up.
That sounds about right.
And they felt that 15% to 20% was probably going to be the average for the next two to three years. It's, it's nothing that we did. From our understanding, it's the state of Iowa is, for the most part, kind of classified as Florida now, in a sense of insurance claims and losses due to.
Derogations.
Yep, derogations, the severe weather, the flooding. So they put us in the kind of the same category of risk as high-risk states, so, you know, the weather kind of settles down in the next few years, and they anticipate that maybe the premiums come back down a little bit, but, you know.
So this is the first iteration. We'll have another reading, so let me know if anything's out of line.
Very good, thank you, Kelly. Thanks. All right. Moved monthly department reports, and we'll probably back to Kelly again.
Feel your exercise?
It's good for me. So the CSR staff continue to perform the day-to-day functions of billing, collections, including setting up new accounts, closing accounts, and collection calls. We continued the work on the 2025 budget files. We also work with Dave regarding the cost of service study. I completed the Great Iowa Treasure Hunt reporting requirements in the project fair, project share filing.
Great, thank you. Jen?
So in August, the customers were reminded about back-to-school savings tips, so that was promoted in the Waverly newspaper as well as on our social media, something that we try to do at this time of year. I've also begun work with Sandhills Energy, as Bob had referenced earlier, in regards to the solar ray event that we're having in Waverly. That will be next Wednesday. It's got here so quickly, but the groundbreaking ceremony, again, will take place next Wednesday at 4:00. So hopefully you all received invites, okay, yeah. And that will be at our location where the arrays will be, we'll actually have some dirt brought in, so you're not like digging up really hard dirt and all that at the, at the groundbreaking. I've started to receive quotes for a new and/or updated website that will take place and budgeted for 2025. So getting those in, we will talk about that next month as I'm finalizing some of the details. Working and looking at companies that have actually worked with utilities in the past helps when we're looking at website designs. And managed all the social media posts and interactions on the backend of customers with messages when they come in, any, you know, time of days, so.
Very good, thank you.
Jen, I know at one time we were going to carpool or something to kind of create a little thing. Has anything been said about that?
We can. And, you know, we, I went out and measured the lane, and I think we had room for like 30 cars, sorry, I thought top of my head, is that sorry? About 30 cars, you know, and looking at the weather, we're looking pretty good, so there's, if we have to go within the field itself, it shouldn't be wet and muddy and everything, so, you know, up to us. If you want to carpool, we will have a couple utility employees out there helping do some parking and that sort too, so whatever you would like to do. And we can talk about that, you know, this week, kind of just make sure that the weather is looking okay. But if we can park in the field, we should be all right.
Yeah. You know, just to bring this up, we talked about Jen and Kurt about this. I hope everybody can be there. I want, my hope is that this is as much or more a Waverly Utilities event as it is a Sandhills event. And it's, you know, they're the ones that are sort of organizing this, so I understand. But, you know, I would certainly hope in the Waverly paper and the Courier and so on, if we get, you know, coverage. This comes across as Waverly Utilities has invited Sandhills in to be a partner in providing solar, you know, power for the community, as opposed to the opposite, so, yeah, just my little spiel. All right, Kurt?
So we're still in the midst of construction season for the crews. We had a little lapse between a couple of projects, so the couple of staff had gone out and picked up on the rustor replacements and inspections. So we're, we've got a few more to go, we're down to about 5,000, so. But the, the rustors are basically on about every pole, over at the pole that we have out there. They come across the ones that are cracked, and when they crack and break, it's not because they're faulty, they take, purposely the rustors to take a lightning hit and protect the distribution system. So it's really kind of a, kind of a protection device. They don't always fail when they take a lightning hit, so we do need to go out and inspect them, but there are, there are a number of them. It takes a while to set up a truck, go open the bucket, inspect it, if it needs to be replaced, fix it, get back down, go to the next pole, so, you know, making the rounds when time allows on that. Did some transformer change outs of the lower vent, Waverly lower vent housing facility. That facility, they're, my understanding, they're, they're on a, their steam heat system for all their living quarter and units, and they've gone, they're going to, that unit has failed, and they have to convert to all electric heat. So they're putting individual HVAC systems in each apartment condo of our living quarters for the residents, and in order to do that, supply the load, we had to change both transformers to a larger size, so. Crews did that in the last month. If you noticed on Bremer Avenue, particularly West Bremer Avenue, the lights look a little brighter on the south side of the road, and it's because the LED manufacturer had a failure of the lights, and we've replaced those with new 400-watt LEDs. So you see the design differences, a little bit different, a little bit brighter. Those were all replaced under a warranty program. And then Kelly had mentioned the LED streetlights. Being a little proactive on this, the LED streetlights have been in the community for 15 years now, hard to believe, but about 2010 is when we converted over from the high-pressure sodium and halogen lamps to the LEDs. If you, the LEDs do have shelf life, they're starting, not completely burning out, but if you look up at several, you'll start to see the particular individual LEDs are burning out in the streetlights themselves, so. Put about a five-year plan in place where we'll be in different areas of the community replacing streetlights. I don't want to do the checkered board effect where, you know, we replace one because it's bad, I kind of want to do the whole street because the lighting quality is going to be a little bit different, the shade, the lumens are going to output differently, so we'll be doing, as budgets allow in time, we'll be getting those in the, in the community in the coming years. Really, the only work we have on the Bremer Avenue Bridge project is removal of the antique streetlights. We removed those, have brought them out to our facility, and have cleaned them and put them into storage for a year or so. Outside of that, we don't have much involvement with that project, outside of the lighting and the roadway when it comes time to reinstall that.
Are those lights going to be reused from the bridge, or?
I, I believe so. I mean, they'll, they'll meet the DOT lighting requirements. I believe in the, the plans that we have, they are calling for the reinstallation of the antique lights, but I've also heard possibly not, so I think the jury might still be out on that one. We'll, we'll see when the time comes and the final design gets done, but I, our understanding is the antique lights will be reinstalled, and that way it kind of stays with consistent look of downtown, so.
Sure.
If anybody's been on East Bremer Avenue, crews have been out there for.
We've all been out on East Bremer Avenue.
Yeah. We've been highly visible there from Cedar Park way back to just west of the GMT facility. That's been a non, that project, that overhead project, started several years ago, and in that particular corridor, we have a lot of customers, a lot of individual peel-off customers, secondaries, businesses, homes. And so the, the overhead project part is, I don't want to oversimplify it, it is a complex project, but that's the easy part, is the, the onesie-twosie hookups that we have to convert over to get customers connected to the new line. And that's the tedious part, the staff have been working on and out for the last couple of weeks. We'll have a planned outage at GMT this Saturday that they're aware of, where we'll be converting their system over to the, the new line, so. Hopefully by mid-October, we'll have that project wrapped up, and crews can pull their mailbox up from the East Bremer Avenue location, so. Generation staff is still doing building maintenance, however, that's winding down. We've been notified by MEAN that come 1st of October, we can take engines down for maintenance, some major overhaul on engine number nine with the installation of the new operating controls and government controls that'll be going on that engine. Engine number seven will be having some work done on the diesel distribution system, so crews are preparing for that. Picking back up on the generation, the replacement of the underground vault system at the South Load Center, we'll be taking that substation down here, we get a little bit cooler temperatures in the next week or so, and they're replacing some cabling that's in a, it's kind of an at-grade vault where we, we deal with a lot of vermin and water intrusion, which gives us some issues, so we're going to do more of a enclosed conduit system here once that project is completed. And other than that, just mostly general maintenance around the plant, so, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Kurt. Okay, let's go back here. We are ready for action items, none, information items. Ready, ready to, no, let's see, oh, monthly department reports for the, for Jen.
From a plant standpoint or construction standpoint, we've still been focusing on the MOPA 7 grant that we're awarded, which covers an area just east of Janesville or near Janesville, and then out near Bremer, the township of Bremer. So we're, we're getting close from a construction standpoint, we're starting to activate customers, so hopefully we'll, we'll have everything wrapped up around the end of the year. Staff did complete some monthly inspections on our main lines that go down to our service provider, which is in Cedar Falls. Nothing was detected, but this is the time of the year, you wouldn't know it over this last week, but it gets a little bit colder and they look for some. last week, but it gets a little bit colder, and they look for some warmth and shelter, and they, they like our pedestals or our enclosures, but right now, we didn't see any damage. On the engineering side, we do have a hotel here in town that's going to convert to our bulk video, so that'll be about 55 set-top boxes. I think the other provider is also mandating or requiring some of these bulk customers to have a box in the room, so they're moving to more of a, a digital signal. We're working with requirement by October 10th for FCC labels. I'll let Jen talk about that a little bit more. She's been leading most of that effort. We did have a fiber cut occur in August, and that was part of the construction just north of Janesville. Fortunately, the backup service or additional capacity that we have going north kicked in, and customers only saw a minor interruption, so it's a good, good investment, good opportunity to test that out. Also had a, an outage in August, on August 18th, that affected Zone One, so a lot of residential customers probably nearer around the utility. We had a line card failure, had to reseat it, but there were issues that were ongoing throughout the day and needed to do a hard reset later that evening and into the morning that actually solved the problem. We had a monthly IPTV owners' meeting, so our head-end provider repaired or recovered from all their water damage, so they're back whole and working, and that allows us to move forward with completing our ABR project, which has been going on for way too long. It appears that the add inserts are working. I'm a little hesitant to make any changes prior to the election. We may just write out what we have now, and then once the election's over, we'll, we'll make the change. We did a couple FCC filings, so the BDC, or broadband data collection, were required to report our internet and phone provider counts, and then also give the, the FCC a map of our territory. So that map has been pretty static over the last couple of years. Going into the end of this year, when we have to provide another report, we'll include our NOFA or our grant territory, so that'll change. And then we did what's called a SAM filing, which is a federal filing that we have to do because we're receiving, receiving federal dollars as part of this NOFA seven grant, and that checks on some of our financials. It goes to, I believe, the Department of Defense, it goes to IRS, and fortunately, we're good for another year. So that's about it.
All right, thank you. Kelly?
So the CSR staff continue to perform the day-to-day functions. That includes billing and collections, troubleshooting, service issues, processing of office reconnects and disconnects, and keeping the installation schedule full. The, I completed the Great Iowa Treasure Hunt filing requirement for WCU, completed the quarterly financial requirements to Dubuque Bank and Trust regarding the loan, completed the SA 1-2, that's a copyright filing that's required, and continue to work on the 2025 budget.
Thank you.
In August, our theme was our fiber network helps local students learn. That goes into the newspaper, radio, and on social media. Like Jeff referenced, the broadband labels is something that's being required by the FCC. So what you see like on food label, or food labels on different products, this is going to be like a food label-looking thing, but on our website. It's not labels that have to go on any of our equipment or anything of that sort. It just has to be listed on our website and presented to the customers when they come in to ask about our pricing and that sort. So we'll have it available at the front office for everybody. So it's, there's a lot of backend work to make sure, we're working with consortia to make sure that we've got everything taken care of on these labels. Thankfully, we don't have a lot of oddball and contracts and all these different things that would normally be listed on these labels, so hopefully it'll be a fairly smooth thing, and then we update them as need be if we have a rate change or anything of that sort. So those have to be in place by October 10th. So we're getting there, and they're in the works, and then we'll get that updated. But you might see it more, the, the larger companies or the larger telecom companies already have to have them in place, but a smaller ones, October 10th is the date. And then just working on social media, Facebook and Instagram as well.
Jen, the labels here, are they just defining like speeds offered, or?
Yeah, it, we have to have a label per each speed that we offer. So I believe they last told me we were going to have, I mean, and it just depends, but there's, I think, going to be eight different labels, and it'll be based off of the, the speed in the package that we offer. Yep, and then we'll like, highlight the rest of it, you know, a lot of it will be the same information.
And then, yeah, website and?
Website.
Phone plates, things like that, or?
Yeah, so the website, it has to be linked on there, and, you know, they're kind of awkward, but it's just what the FCC is telling us we need to do. And then I'll either have a poster and/or flyers that we'll hand out in welcoming packets into people that come in and refer to pricing, anything about the pricing as well. We're in the process right now of doing training on it.
All right, thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Close session, parable code 22.7, confidential competitive information. Everything motion second to move to closed session.
So moved.
Second. Angie?
Bellson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Aye.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Brunkhorst.
All right, move into closed session. We need to
I can't hear anything.
Shutting down.
Okay.
Shutting down.